Are you not going to give us a countdown?
I'll say.
Okay, welcome to this this
Fifth.
Seventh. Seventh meeting of the Milton Planning Board for the fiscal year 2013. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman, and with me are
Bernie Lynch, member.
Mike Kelly.
All right, Mr. Clark, the town planner, will be joining us, as will Mrs. Innis. But there is a line of traffic extending from, I don't know where, but Grand Ole Avenue is just a line of traffic.
Each Milton is the same.
All right, so there are many lines of traffic in town, and we think that they may have our next our next item of business is the minutes of the 18th.
It's going to be late, it should probably get here to like 7:15.
All right, Mrs. Innis has confirmed that the traffic has slowed down. Okay, have people read these? Do they want to act on them?
Did the teacher correct us?
I think these are with some of my suggestions, yes, I did. I think they're okay.
I think so, too.
I think they're okay, so why don't why doesn't someone make a motion to approve them?
I want to approve this.
All right. And we have a second, all in favor. Now, the next set of minutes, well you guys at Amelie are going to have to have to figure them out. Why don't we postpone them? I really want this?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll announce that. Okay, so I think that the minutes for September 18th, we will postpone and let you guys since I'm I wasn't participating, let you guys figure them out. Our next meeting is October 11th. We're going to then meet on October 25th. We've now gotten to the citizen speak portion of our agenda, and we're looking forward to citizens telling us their concerns which have relevance to our jobs. So, who would like to participate in citizen speak? Well, welcome. Oh, let me, before you say something that you might regret, let me tell you that we are being televised live, Mike. Televised live, and we're keeping a taped copy of the meeting.
Thank you. Margaret Donovan, Bodyline Central Avenue. And I am here because I don't see 131 Elliott Street listed as a public hearing. I'm here to speak to 131 Elliott Street. And the first question I have, and I addressed it to Mr. Clark in an email, and he asked me if I received the reply today, and I had not, but I had not by the time I left. So, the question was, when was the vote taken to end the public hearing on 131 Elliott Street? And I said, as I recall, and usually my recollection is pretty good, that on August 23rd, after the votes, one against the bonus and two against the special permit, the board immediately went to the next item on the agenda. And I went upstairs to hear what Mr. Ponderk had to say about the demolition to the Board of Selectmen. So, I raised questions simply because I, if there was never any vote to end the public hearing, one should be taken. I'm not sure what the legal ramifications
Well, what we'll do tonight is, I would say that my or my memory is that we closed the hearing and then took a vote, but if we didn't, by taking a vote, that certainly closed the hearing. But what we'll do is, tonight, we'll we'll vote to reaffirm the fact that the the hearing is closed, and and then we can vote the thing that we're signing. So, I think that that should take care of that.
Okay. My next question was, and my statement was that I thought that the planning board should be involved in notifying the abuddists of the timeframe and the details of the demolition. But if not the planning board, then who will have that responsibility? Because we're talking about major demolition. We're not talking about some disruptions such as building 36 Central. We're talking about rats coming out of the river. We're talking about asbestos coming down and blowing around town. So, who will be in charge of notifying the abuddists as to when this is going to take place and what they can do to protect their own property?
Now, Mr. Clark has a full and complete response.
He does. The selectmen will be taking on that issue. It has, it's not an issue for the planning board, it is completely in the selectmen's department. It's being coordinated between the selectmen, the building department, and the Board of Health. So, it will, a notice will come from the selectmen.
A notice or?
There'll be a couple more public hearings on the process as we move it forward, but we're right now in the stage of putting together a, an RFP, request for proposals for taking down the building. I can't give you who's going to take it down because we haven't released the RFP. I can't tell when it's coming down because, again, the RFP has not been issued. The money portion of it is on the special town meeting, so that's October 22nd, so we'll have answers by then as to how, what, when, but I look for them just before then. We're not taking it down in the next three weeks.
So, it is my understanding from listening to your comments, then, that there'll be a couple of public hearings before this process takes place? Is that correct?
It will be discussed at the selectmen's meeting. There's two selectmen meetings between now and town meeting, so it will at least come up twice. What's going to come out of those, I'm not sure yet, but I know that it will be, I know that something will go out to the abutting neighbors, that this will be taking place, and how and when in particular.
Okay, I'm a little bit concerned because I never recall the Board of Selectmen notifying
They haven't, but they would address the immediate abuddists to the project, and seeing that the Milton Times is in the back row, I'm sure there'll be an article in the newspaper. We'll make sure of it.
Okay. All right, my third is a request. Could you, well, hopefully Emily can get here in the next few minutes, but could you move the signing up to 6:45 so that we, some of us in the audience here do not have to sit through the whole meeting to wait to observe this historic act?
Well, we would, we would, I think my ruling would be that by voting, we closed the, we implicitly closed the meeting. That by bringing the matter to a vote, the public hearing was, in fact, thereby closed. And I think that it's a necessary consequence of taking a vote, that you can't have a public hearing continue beyond the vote denying it. So, I think that it was implicit in what we did, and I don't think we need to close it again tonight, because the hearing has been closed. So, we're not going to, we're not going to take, we're not going to entertain even the notion that the public hearing is somehow still open.
But you are going to take a vote to reaffirm your vote?
We're going to, we're going to sign the decision, and we may take a vote to reaffirm it, or we may just sign the decision.
I thought, I just heard you say a few minutes ago that you were going to take a vote to reaffirm the vote.
Well, but that was, I was thinking out loud. And I said, while you were asking your second question and Mr. Clark was giving the answer, I was, I was mulling it over, and I decided that it was, it was inherent in taking the vote that the hearing was closed.
Mr. Whiteside, I just wanted to remind you of what you reminded me, is that not only is this meeting being broadcast, but it's also being taped.
Thank you. But our, that last meeting was taped, too, and I'm sure that if we went back to it, it would, we would, we'd be okay.
So, getting back to my question, could you move the signing up so that those of us who want to see this?
Yes, 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 we could, because we don't have to have a time certain for this, because the public hearing has been closed.
Two of you can sign it, but Mrs. Innis will not be here before 7:15.
Oh.
So, at 7:15, we'll probably sign it.
All right, that's, that's acceptable. Thank you so much. Did you get my post, did you get my postcard? It was addressed to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clark, did the postcard come in?
It was sent to you, Mr. Chairman.
Can you pack it, Mr. Chairman?
Well. Very nice, thank you very much. It's nice to get postcards.
You're welcome.
You sure you have nothing else you want to discuss with us?
No, I'm hoping this is the end.
All right. Okay, now we can discuss remote participation. Or shall we have the town planners' report?
Let's do that first.
Okay. The selectmen have decided to adopt some regulations from the Attorney General allowing remote participation in meetings where someone's someone is let's see. I think it's far away, sick. Oh, here it is. Personal illness, personal disability, emergency, military service, or geographic distance. That about covers everything. And then this, these regulations say that the chairman, who, in this instance, is me, gets to decide whether or not the member's excuse is is adequate. And if the chairman says, sorry, I don't like the excuse, it's not good enough for me, because I have a very high level of excuses, then the member is out of luck. Whereas, a, another chairman might and actually, I think that my position would be if a member says that they'd like to participate by remotely, that I would allow this as long as they could say it's one of these four things, because I think it's not a very sound business of the chairman delving into the personal affairs of members. And I have indicated that it, we may need to have some video equipment brought in so that when we have plans, the, and we'll have, we'll, we'll give the member a screen to take home with him, so that when we have plans, we can video the, or maybe we'll get a direct feed, Mike, from the telecast and send it, send it off to the, to the members so that they can see what's going on. What do you think, Bill? Is this a good idea?
It means that the board can call in sick or have an emergency, but you can't.
Why not?
Because the chairman has to be here to run the meeting. You have to read it.
Tick, tick, base, or anything.
Also, the board has, the board has to take the vote
To what?
To accept.
We have to accept this? I thought the selectmen
Selectmen did, but it's up to every board to take and vote it for themselves.
All right, everyone should read this.
This goes back to the issue
Did you give this to everyone?
No, I did not, it came to you. What this would help is like, the night that Bernie had to stay at home, although he watched us, and he was talking to us on the telephone. I know. He's talking to us, sending us texts. You could, by phone, be brought into the room. I mean, we have the ability by the phone over here to, to bring that into the room, and you can then participate watching
Well, he also was watching, he was getting the, the video feed, so
I know, but we couldn't do it then. If this board votes for it, we could with this
Okay, so what we're going to do, rather than rush into the matter, is distribute this, and then we will vote at the next meeting whether or not whether or not this is to our liking or not. Okay, Bill?
Yes, yes.
All right, so we'll put it in the, maybe the packet for the next meeting?
Okay.
I think that's probably
Okay.
You want, you want it back, I gather?
I do, when I can make copies. I gave you the copy.
All right. Okay. Now, we've gotten to the part of the meeting that everyone always anticipates with great interest, which is the town planners' report.
This week, we were notified that, by town council, that our last legal hurdle in Superior Court came down in the town's favor, that our wetlands bylaw, the Conservation's Commission's Order of Conditions under the town's bylaw allows us to put up the wind turbine. Now, we just have to wait for the arbitration ruling, which will come at the end of October. I've been dealing with issues, dealing with the RFP for the building demolition for the town's portion of 131 Elliott. Dealing with the zoning articles with John Flynn and with the warrant committee, and I actually have something from John Flynn on the Sput zoning issue, which
I saw that.
Yep, you have it in front of you. The warrant committee will be here in just a bit to discuss the two articles that are going before town meeting, with some changes they would like to see or would like to have within the recommendations. And tomorrow, I'm going to a 40B conference over at Lantana. We have one that has been proposed, but there are new issues with 40B all the time, so keep apprised of what they are. I'll be going to that tomorrow morning.
Well, good.
The new restaurant is due to open in three weeks on, in the Fallon Building, Steel and Rye. They came in for the assigned permit today, we should be able to get to that sometime next week. We've had several telecommunications, design review permits, so Mr. Duffy and I will be together again in about 10 days for more, so your cell phone should be getting better, better reception. I think that's about it.
Question until the town planner?
Yeah, I hope several questions.
The Wolf, the old Wolf Building?
Yep.
I don't believe I approved the building, the dead building. It looks like a skyscraper. So, maybe you can come back and let us know.
Well, maybe you, you can address that right now.
I bet I can't.
So, you bet you can't?
I bet I can't. Whatever the plans were that were submitted to the building inspector or what they're building, how much higher it is, did they, last I saw, they just had the two floors. Have they put a roof on it? I don't think so.
Well, they're, they're really taking their time, that's, that's
Well, they're taking their time.
Yeah, they're taking their time. It just doesn't look like, what?
It's two very big boxes.
Big, big.
But there's no windows cut in it, it's just big, yes. But I would say, wait for the windows, wait for the roof line, wait for the siding, but it's what they submitted with their plans. And I don't know. Tree Woodens ruling on the 35 Hillside?
Yeah.
He's having a public hearing at 4 o'clock, October 3rd, on site, because of the amount of trees coming down.
4 o'clock, October 3rd?
On site.
Refreshments will be served.
I didn't say that.
Hot cider, Mr. Chairman?
Well, it is the fall. Well, perhaps refreshments won't be served, so people should not, should not count on them.
This is the town wardens' meeting, not mine.
Okay, what else? Have you seen my zoning book? I left it here last time, and I
Emily has it.
I found it.
I gave it to Emily, I thought it was hers.
I thought it was hers.
She will, yes, and she will bring it tonight.
Well, that will be very gratifying, I was thinking that I could, I could
She's on her way, she's leaving the office right now.
She's leaving the office right now?
Yep, give her 20 minutes. That, that was while I was talking, so
All right. So, now, we've stretched it out pretty far, and I think that we should
Take some more business?
I don't think, oh, well, we could do the, we could do 86 Walcott.
He's not here.
Okay, we can't do, we can't do the zoning, I don't think. Well, we're waiting for the warrant committee to do the zoning.
Mr. Coulter is here.
Mr. Coulter is here, and Mr., well, maybe you can, they can, he could discuss this, the changes to, I made some changes, and then I got something, I don't know what it is that I got.
We can talk about Neds.
If this is, we have a Neds draft here. I did a draft, too, but we don't have that available, apparently.
The change, go ahead. Explain the difference between yours and this.
And we don't have, you know, we, I don't have, I've got this thing that's all marked up, and so it's very hard to, it's very hard for me, at least, to read. But why don't you discuss what your, what your, your thinking is?
Sure, Ned Corcoran, on behalf of the Tom Coulter, whose property is substantially the subject of the zoning, of the proposed bylaw. I received by email from Bill Clark, two iterations of modifications proposed to the bylaw, I think first that you prepared, Mr. Chairman, and then some modifications to that that were prepared by Mr. Clark.
Well, they were basically corrections to the first one.
Right. And what I did, because it was difficult to do a comparison of documents against what was finally being proposed, is that I compared essentially Bill's draft with the draft of the, of the article as it was presented and signed by the citizens. And proposed a couple of other minor, well, I think, minor modifications, technical modifications of my own, and I submitted them as a new red line, all comments, all comments post the original draft compared to the new draft. So, I think that the work that you did in particular, Mr. Chair, was very good, it was, it did a, a nice job of sort of cleaning up some of the ambiguities in the, in the proposed draft. And I think are, in our, from our perspective, are certainly acceptable. There were a couple of things that I proposed, which unfortunately don't show up in this draft. I sent a new version this morning, which was a clean
I got that version, but it, it still had the
The one with the yellow line?
It still had the nursery language in it.
It's
The one I got this morning had the nursery language in it, so I
It shouldn't have, and I apologize if it did. It should say landscaping greenhouse residential.
This is yours.
But now, that's fine, I can work with this. I've been, I'm reading it, and it just seems to be, why don't you discuss, I mean, you've got businesses made, why? If, if, if people were to read the, what we've done here is, it seems to me, the landscaping business is a landscaping business, and it should be defined as a landscaping business. And then we've got a greenhouse business, which does all kinds of, of sales and Christmas trees, and, and stuff that a landscaping business actually doesn't do. So, we, that will be the greenhouse, we'll do its, the farmer's market, and the other stuff.
Right.
So, that's
And I think, and I think your separation of those two businesses and the definitions associated with those was a very, wasn't, wasn't effective and appropriate way to do that.
So, we did that, and
And I know that you, for example, require a parking plan, which I think is appropriate. You require approval by the town sign committee of signs, which is appropriate. I changed, made one change in Section 5C regarding setback for the accessory garage to comply with what is allowed under residence-based zoning, it's 10 feet setbacks rather than 20.
Well, if the, if the actual
And the actual garage is less than 20.
It's taller than it should be.
It was approved by a special permit of the Board of
I understand that, but it was approved as being 20 feet away.
That I'm not, I'll double check that, I'm pretty sure it was
But in any, but what we're trying to do is zone what's there.
Correct, and what is there
We don't want a whole lot of new buildings.
There's no new buildings, the, what is there is a, is a, is a building that is set back 10 feet plus from the lot line.
Okay, I mean, if it's, if it's not
That's what we're, it's not 20.
If it's not 20 feet, then it should be 10 feet.
Correct, it's not 20.
I just, we want it to be, basically, to describe what's there.
Right.
And, and this is, when you say that the plan can include small sheds, you don't say how many, where they're going to be, I suppose that what we're going to have to do is say to be approved by the planning board, small sheds to be approved by the planning board, just because, otherwise
Right, there are, there are a small handful, there is a handful of small sheds on the property, they are buffered, and as part of an existing, of the conditions plan that would come in, we'll demonstrate where they are located.
Okay, so that
The other
The other?
Modification, you also added some language clarifying the notion of the dumpster, that it should be used in a quiet manner, emit no noxious odors, and contain no food wastes, obviously important protection for abuddists associated with the use of the of the dumpster. At two locations, I inserted, and they do not appear in that, they, with modifications that I requested this morning in an updated version that I in an updated version that I sent over.
That's the one, insofar as possible?
Insofar as possible. That's correct.
Well, I think that, once again, I, I think what you say is that the, they shall be in the thing except as may be permitted by the planning board. And then the idea of lean-to's, once again, has to be... You, you see, the, the idea was that the garage might not, all the equipment might not fit in the garage. And Ned said, well, we might put up a lean-to to put it under. And it does seem to me that any such structure needs our approval. And if they can't get all the stuff into the garage, they need approval to do something else with it.
Right. Store neatly, you know, on the site, and that's, that's a condition of the existing permits.
Exactly, and where you store it, et cetera.
That's correct.
Seems to, seems to me to be, if you want to put that in there, then you have to throw yourself on the mercy of the planning board. But I, and Mr. Flynn has come up with a nice opinion. I've got to say that Raymond versus Building Inspector of Brimfield, which is a Massachusetts appeals court case, where there was a business in Brimfield, and it had a number of employees, and they needed to expand the business. And to do so, they had to get rezoning of a lot nearby them. And without rezoning, the business was going to have to close, and the jobs were going to be lost. And the appeals court said, there's a public purpose in preserving employment. And I was convinced. And now Mr. Flynn, in a thoughtful memorandum, has said that he's convinced too, that there are, that the, there can, there can be a public purpose, there is a public purpose here. And if you look at the zoning, we, we recite that. We say, "The business shall preserve employment in the town and thereby serve a public purpose." And in another line of cases, Mr. Corcoran points out that property that's been traditionally used in a manner different from the zone in which it falls can be treated differently by zoning. So where you have the, where we have here is property that has been treated in a, or has been used in, as a school, and then it's a commercial residential lot. We've got a double-barreled reason why this is not unjustified spot zoning. And if you look at Mr. Flynn's opinion, he, he's of that opinion. So I agree with him. I think that the board, from what I heard last time, was inclined to, inclined to the same result. So do people have questions? You, Mike, have filed a disclosure. Is that right?
You sign it?
Just sign it?
But I think that, I think as long as we can get this language buttoned down, we're happy enough to recommend this zoning to the town meeting. The warrant committee will be in to, to discuss things, and they apparently have some concerns, which can be addressed. If they can express them, it can be, it can be written into the zoning.
I did meet with the warrant committee last week and know that they took a very favorable vote in favor of recommendation. I'm not aware of concerns, but I'm obviously interested in hearing any that they may have now.
Yeah. All right. Well, I've, I've told you that I, I do want, we're going to have to have a change to make sheds and lean-tos and parking vehicles outside, all subject to the special permit procedure.
Sure. There's no concerns from the warrant committee on this article. They are in full support of it.
Of this? Well, they're just going to have to...
With the changes, they, I've given them the changes as you just got them. They have the opinion from town council.
Yeah.
They didn't have any issues with the...
So they're not, okay, well, that's good.
They're fine with it.
So that, so that's, that... It would be nice, it would be nice if we could pass this zoning, issue a special permit, and revoke it. But I'm not sure we can do that. But it is going to clutter up our zoning bylaw fairly significantly.
Well, I think, I mean, from a...
And it was too bad, I mean, if we had a, an article that we could put this sort of thing in, saying, "You don't have to really read this," unless... In any event, I, I, it's going to be in probably at the end of section three?
Section three.
Is it? Bill, would it be in section, it would have to be at... End of section three. No, I don't think it can be M.
Assistive living is going first.
Okay.
That'll be L. This will be M.
All right.
K is...
J is, if I had my zoning bylaw, I would be able to...
Downstairs. Click right to.
So I, I think the, the board would certainly benefit from the opportunity to re, do a final review of the, of a clean draft of this, since there were exchanges of drafts between you and Mr. Clark and myself during the week.
I think the board would do well if they authorized me to negotiate the final language.
Happy to, I'm happy to recommend that the board do that on behalf of Mr. Coulter.
This will be section three, subsection M.
Okay. So, Planning Board of Milton, what do you want to do about this?
I'll make that motion that Ned...
Ned and me, Ned and me will iron out the, the final details, including whatever the warrant committee may want. And then we will, at the town meeting, we will, we will issue a recommendation that we think the town meeting should pass this because it would preserve employment and serve a public purpose, and because we don't feel that there is significant detriment to the neighborhood. Not having heard from the butler, who seems to be quite worked up about this.
Correct.
But we cannot divine his intentions, and he hasn't appeared to express them. So we will, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been...
I made a motion.
And the, the motion is to recommend approval to the town meeting, and that the approval will be of an article in this form with the corrections and, and modifications agreed to by Mr. Corcoran and me.
I second the motion.
Okay.
Discussion?
Discussion.
I missed this meeting, but I saw it three times on television. Once in the Milton Hospital and twice in my house.
All right.
This isn't a public hearing, so it's just a...
Well, just, okay, so...
It's a hearing. It was a hearing. It was a hearing on the recommendation, and it probably was a public hearing. But I think that, I ruled that you can vote because you've seen this so many times. And you have an excellent excuse. This is, this is what they're getting us into. Maybe we'll apply this bylaw nuke pro tunk. All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, there was, I noticed on the docket that there is a public hearing scheduled for 7:45 for 36 and 50 Elliott Street.
I saw that.
It was, that was continuing until October 11th.
I was going to suggest that this seemed to be, seemed to be a, didn't seem to be a good, a good item for our agenda, but it does fill it up. But we will, we will note, duly note at that time that it's been continued.
Yeah, it was, it was not continued till this evening. It was continued till October 11th at 6:45.
I will, I will, at 7:45, I will note that it was actually continued to October 11th. And you don't have to stick around because we will, we will take care of it.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, Mr. Clark, where is Mrs. Innis? Has she, has she texted in? Is she texting while she drives?
No, she did before she got in the car. She's two minutes late, she'll...
She's two minutes away?
Two min, no, two minutes late.
Beyond the time she suggested she be in.
She is now four minutes late.
That clock's two minutes fast.
All right. Okay, well, that's good. We've got, we're moving right along. We can do the Bosworth.
Well, we could, but...
But...
How about putting in Walcott first, and Emily will begin?
Okay, Walcott, bro.
He's not here, is he?
Yeah, he's...
He's sitting in the car.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Paul Sullivan, the applicant for two lots, proposed two lot subdivision at 86 Walcott Street. And we had addressed two of the issues that came up in the last discussion we had in this...
Yeah.
Proposed two lot. One of the issues was the lot, one, it didn't have sufficient square footage to meet the zoning requirement of 40,000 square feet.
Yeah.
So we...
That's because you, you don't include the, the roadway.
Yeah, we've eliminated, we're not including the roadway any longer, so we've increased the size of the lot to meet the 40,000 square feet.
Okay.
Without the use of any of the square footage of the, of the right-of-way. And then the other issue was, that was brought up that night, was 150-foot straight line fronted on the, the row on lot two.
Yeah.
So we've, we've called that out in the plans also.
Okay. Well, those are, that's what, those were the issues, weren't they, Bill?
Yes.
And it sounds to me like you've addressed the issues. So that the board's ability to act on this plan favorably is going to be much easier than if they hadn't. All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. The next step for this would be that we'll publish the public hearing for this, and it would be the 25th of October.
Okay. That will be great. Okay, now we're going to sign the, now. As you may recall, back a ways ago, on August 23rd, we took a vote to deny the application for special permit and site plan approval at 131 Elliott Street. And since that time, I have written a decision, which the board has had for several weeks. And tonight's the night to sign the decision, and tomorrow, the decision will be filed with the town clerk. So everyone having read this, and Mr. Lynch voted against this particular denial.
I did.
And Mr. Kelly was not involved in all the hearings, so he was disqualified from participating. So I think that we should, and Miss Donovan suggests that we may not have closed the public hearing. I ruled that by taking a vote, we actually did close the public hearing. But we can, we can vote to reaffirm the fact that the public hearing was, in fact, closed before we voted. And then we can vote this decision as our decision.
So you need a motion to that effect?
Okay, well, let's... To reaffirm that the meeting was closed, or if not, to close the hearing.
Okay.
Okay? So moved?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. All right. It's closed. Now, we've got this decision, and we'll take a motion to execute this decision. A motion to vote to, let's figure this out. Do you have a good...
Yes, because we've already, we've already voted to deny.
We've already voted to deny it. Okay, so to, to reaffirm the denial and...
I don't need, now that we need to reaffirm the denial, I think we should accept, a vote to accept the, the written decision that's in front of us.
This is why you're...
Right. This is...
Yeah.
To reaffirm the denial with these as, with these as reasons.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Can we put a trade on this call?
What?
Should we date this?
Yeah, we will date it, yeah. Okay? Shall we do that? Shall we vote that?
Yes, so moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Was it seconded?
You voting aye?
Oh, no.
Okay, you vote no.
But, discussion.
Okay.
Discussion.
I just thought we voted. Okay. All right, discussion.
Two, item two.
Yeah.
The proposed building may have too many stories.
Right.
Yes.
If they had, if they produced a plan that we could have used to determine how many stories the building had, we could have determined how many stories it had. But they didn't produce the plan, and so we couldn't determine how, how many stories it had.
Three. The proposed building may be too tall.
Exactly, because they didn't produce the plan that we required. All right. I'm going to sign on the top line.
I've got the three here. Yeah, I got the, I have the three here, and I'm leaving you the top line and Eddie the second one because he's seconded.
No, I, I, we do, I do explain in this why it may be.
I read it, but it just, you're denying something, may be.
It should be blue.
Blue, it should be blue. We've got the blue pen anyway.
What?
It may be too tall.
Well, it may be too tall. Look, we go with what we've got. They didn't give us what we needed to determine height or number of stories. We asked for it. And in fact, I, we left this thing sort of pending for a couple of weeks. And if they'd wanted to, they could have come in and, and...
Talked about it.
Talked about it. But, and I did, I spoke to him on the phone, and I said, "Look, if you want to resurrect..." But, and I did, I spoke to him on the phone, and I said, "Look, if you want to resurrect this process, come in and talk to us."
Where does the no, the no vote, how is it reflected in this document?
Denial.
You mean your, your vote against the denial? It's reflected in the minutes. It doesn't get reflected in the document because it's a majority.
Right, because you're not signing this.
Yes, it's only being signed by the people who voted in favor.
This is, if you want to write a dissenting opinion, I don't know what would happen with that, but it's, it's very clear that, let's, wait, hang on one second. Yeah, the planning board by vote of the undersigned has denied the application. So, I mean, your name not, you're, you're covered.
Covered.
Impliedly. Okay. Phil, tomorrow.
And Mrs. Ben.
Now...
Thank you.
Just one quick question, Mr. Chair, is that a, is there an appeal process on that decision?
Yes.
Okay. And how long is that?
Ah, I think it's 30 days from filing, is it not, Bill?
I couldn't remember, it was 21 or 30, or 20 or 30.
Did you bring my...
That's yours, yes.
Oh, thank you.
It got delivered to me by the state.
I was, I knew that I'd left it here. I searched my house, and then I figured it out. The Bosworth, the Bosworth, 333 Hillside Street, this is a 81 Y subdivision. An 81 Y subdivision is basically a one-lot subdivision, which everyone knows is impossible. But if you do it through 81 Y, there you are, and anything's possible.
Good evening, my name is Jim Burke, I'm here to represent Charles Bosworth through DeSalle Burke and Associates, and we met a couple of weeks ago with about this 81 Y subdivision, and we've made, generated a plan for your review and signature, hopefully, that it's a sheet one of one that provides the details necessary for recording for an 81 Y subdivision. I sent it over via email to Mr. Clark, along with the grant of access easement generated by Mr. Bosworth's attorney, and we went through the actual road improvements and driveway improvements, drainage, water, et cetera, and pretty much agreed to everything that the board requested. So I think we're at a point now where we're looking to get an approval on the subdivision plan itself and kind of move forward.
Okay, now, the grant of access easement, we're going to, I'm going to review it, Mr. Gregg's going to review it.
Sure.
Mr. Gregg's lawyer's going to review it. Mr. Sheffield is going to review it. So by the time this thing has been reviewed, but it does seem to me that we can still, if we're, if we're ready to file this thing with the clerk and start the appeal period running, my feeling is, after I hear, what, what, what are you doing here, Mr. Sheffield?
I'm Kenny Rock Sheffield, I represent Martin Dean, who is in a butter and also benefited by the easement, and I note that I received this after the office closed at 5 o'clock tonight. I received it at 5:53.
Yeah.
In my review of it, I find that there is one sentence that needs to be excised.
In the grant of easement.
Relating to the grant of easement.
Right, but I, my, my, my plan would be this, that the board would authorize this plan to be, take a vote, that this plan can be filed with the town clerk. Once we button down this grant of easement with you, Mr. Gregg's attorney, me, and...
I have no objection to that.
And once, once we do that, then I would alert Bill saying, "You can file," rather than wait till the next meeting, but, but not file without this thing having been, having been determined.
Popular. Sure.
And it seems to me that's a non-unreasonable way to go.
Will we have a chance to submit our own comments on it? I also got it late.
You, yes, yes, yes.
But I'm comfortable with that.
I'll hit each of the people that are listed.
Copies.
With copies.
Okay. I, I, I know that...
The six of them on this page.
Mr. Gregg has a, has a lawyer who I, I will be interested to see if they have comments, but we'll, we'll vet this thing thoroughly, and sending it out and getting...
Some comment back.
Yeah, getting comments is fine. And have you looked at the plan, Mr. Sheffield?
I've looked at the plan. I think the plan was very professionally done, as to what you meet the needs of the planning board.
So I, my feeling is that we should move along here and vote to approve this subdivision plan, subject to the chairman and the interested parties working out an agreeable, agreeable language in the grant of access easement, at which time the chairman will alert Mr. Clark and authorize him to file the approval with the town clerk.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. There's no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll get a Mylar real...
So, the vote is unanimous, and the filing vote isn't going to occur until we've got this thing buttoned down. Yes, Mr. Clark?
I have questions on the, on the development itself.
Yeah.
Are you putting in conditions on the development?
Not, not the...
You mean beyond whatever's listed on the plan, beyond the width of the driveway and the other, and the easement and the other items we've discussed?
The street is basically the, the issue. What they, what they do on their lot is, is going to be on to...
There were some requirements. Do you have the other page?
The subdivision itself?
Yeah. Wow. You're approving the plan but not the subdivision.
Where...
You're approving progress to the driveway.
Did we just approve this, which is what I thought we were approving, or did we approve this?
I thought that everything is on the plan, is it not?
The...
What isn't on the plan? I mean, how many sheets does the plan have?
Seven.
Seven sheets. So...
I'm talking about the, the drain is coming down the dr, down, down the lane.
Okay. What about the drain is coming down the lane?
Well, it's, we thought we'd be a little bit more concise if we just generated a single 81 Y plan that's kind of recordable line.
Well, I mean, you're going to record all seven sheets.
Is it, can we reference the, the plan set itself on the...
What happened is, we had a subdivision up on Forest Street, but they only recorded one, one sheet of a multi-seat plan. And, and we have been having all kinds of problems because all the other, all the other sheets have been lost, and...
Imagine that.
Exactly. You said it yourself.
Exactly. Look.
But not there, too. No, I, we could, there are a couple ways you could do that.
Conform the plans.
We could, you know, have a covenant referencing the subdivision plan in the planning board decision, or we can just record the whole set. Recording, you know, going Mylar, we looking at signature blocks for each seven sets of plans?
The plan happens after the appeal period has ended.
Sir.
You're going to bring in the Mylars, and we're going to sign the seven sheets. What?
I'm listening, I'm not saying...
We're going to sign the seven sheets, and everything is going to be on the plan so that we don't send them to the registry of deeds to look up some, I mean, if it, everything that's important that they have to do needs to be recited on the plan.
I'd say that everything related to the driveway certainly needs to be done. The lot itself, as far as the development of the lot, that's kind of covered with regards to the stormwater management bylaws for Town of Milton because it's over an acre, and it's subject there, too.
Well, we're not, we're not, this is subdivision.
Right.
We're not discussing the house on the lot.
But you're talking about the drainage and the water.
The drainage of, of the street, yeah.
Right.
Well, we've got the, we've got drainage, you've got a sheet of drainage calculation.
Sir.
We've got a sheet as to what you're going to do, right?
Certainly. I'd say the lot design itself is fairly conceptual. The street is not. The street is actually ready for construction.
The lot design is, you mean, what they're going to do with it.
Correct.
Right. But that isn't our department.
Certainly.
That's why, the plan that's in front of you tonight has the building envelope, so they can build anywhere inside the envelope.
Right.
With their hubs.
Right.
The other plan that would go with this would be the, the roadway issues.
The what?
The roadway. The one that's up here now actually shows the swale that's come, not in your hand, up on the board over here.
Are these the one, the sheet set here?
Yes.
That we received on August 23rd? There's been no updates to that?
Correct. They're out, no. No updates on that set. The only reason we generated another plan, the lotting plan itself, which is part of this set, was a little cumbersome for deed reference. We can certainly swap out, that's the one we generated to make it a little bit easier to understand and to record.
All right, but you're going to still record everything.
I can cer, I can make that part of the set.
Make it part of the set, yeah, absolutely.
And then record the whole set.
We, we want the whole set recorded.
Fine.
And we want to sign the whole set.
Well, you have plenty of ink. Yes, we do.
All right. And, Mr. Clark, now that we know that we're signing the whole set, is, do we have stuff that you still want?
You've addressed my issues.
What?
You have addressed my issues.
Okay. All right. And, and the, what we file with the town clerk will, will be a description of, we've approved this subdivision as reflected in the plan, and I guess we file the plan, don't we, with the town clerk? I think we do.
We offer it to her. The...
And then you, well, you will probably be the...
Yes.
Right, okay. So we'll do it.
The, the... Okay.
Okay?
I'm, I'm just looking at the, at the roadway itself as it comes in, and we do not have a decision that's going to say that it must be done in a certain manner, or it must be done by a certain time.
We're not writing out a decision for this?
Well, I mean, they've got, the subdivision control law has certain time limits. I mean, they don't have to build this subdivision if they don't want to witness a subdivision on Forest Street, but they've got to put a, they've got to put a bomb down, which will probably be the lot. To guarantee that it gets constructed as shown. I mean, if it doesn't, if it doesn't show it right, then it should be changed, but I, I beg you, that's okay.
Yep.
Okay. So we've already voted, actually. That was an ex post facto of discussion.
Okay. So I think we're good to go. I'll...
I think you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
All right. 36 to 50 Elliott Street is going to be heard by us on October 11th.
October 11th, yeah.
And we look forward to that. Now, Mrs. Ennis, you're, it's great that you're here because otherwise, I was going to discuss the master plan visioning.
Well, I do apologize for being late. I had a client deadline, but a little longer than we expected.
Or, how's the warrant committee doing? Do they want to come up and discuss zoning with us? You better come up and discuss zoning with us, warrant committee. I was looking for the entire warrant committee.
Well, you have the zoning subcommittee, you have the warrant committee here.
Oh, that's good. Welcome.
Thank you.
Identify yourselves for the audience. I told Mrs. Donovan that not only are we being telecast live, but we're being recorded. What was your...
Stan Janiga.
Cheryl Togias.
Joyce Nkwa.
And we are the three members of the zoning subcommittee of the warrant committee, of which I am the chair. We met last night, as well as last week, and we, when we met last week, we discussed this article for a couple of hours with Bill Clark and with Ned Corcoran, who happened to be waiting to talk to us about the other article. So we sent some com, our comments, I already sent a summary of our comments to Bill, which I hope he shared with you. Or we can, we can give an overview of our comments.
Why don't you, why, why don't you run?
Give an overview, please. They did get it, but...
Okay.
But what?
I didn't say anything. I, I send them back. I don't know if you get them or don't get them. Occasionally, I get a comment back, and more times than not, I didn't get that, which is why there's so many papers in front of me.
I don't remember getting any comments, but...
Okay, I'll, I'll give an overview, and Stan and Joyce, jump in if I don't, if I miss something. Well, first of all, we support the use, assisted living use, so the intent of the article to allow for assisted living, we think is a great idea. But there were some things which concerned us that we thought made the article as written too narrow, so we, we talked at length about how we might address that, and we thought the timing was just a little unfortunate that we had, you had your public hearing, and then we had our meeting, and then we had to go to press with the warrant so quickly. So the way our recommendation is written in the warrant is no recommendation at this time, because we wanted to have this opportunity to talk to you about the article. So we felt that by having a couple of things that are in the body of the article such that if an applicant didn't provide a design that met those, that, that the article would have to be amended by you and ratified or agreed to at the, on the floor of town meeting, that it made for, for an onerous way to get a, a building approved that didn't meet a couple of particular criteria. And the two that we identified were the courtyard, and the other is the porcochere with the porch. So those were things that we thought if you'd be willing to entertain a revision to, that we felt as if that would help make it a broader article and not so narrow. And then the other thing that was of concern to us was the interior requirements, and we felt as if those are best dealt with at the building code level. We felt as if it would be, without specific criteria as to what the requirements that you're looking for were, it would be hard to, for an applicant to know whether those are being met, and hard for that to be enforced, and they're actually better dealt with at the building code level, and even the design standards for the use type. So we... and even the design standards for the use type. So we suggest that those not be included in the article. So that's the summary, really, after lengthy conversation of what we'd like for you to consider changing.
So just to clarify, you're looking at three common area space on page one, and then you're, that would be the part that deals with the courtyard, and then you're looking at 12C on the port cochere and the 12J on the interior spaces on page four. Is that correct?
Right. And Emily, also on section five references the courtyard as well?
The building, the building is... I, I thought there was one other place. I can't remember what it was. Oh, there it is. Thank you. Well, one possibility would be to say may, in the case of the courtyard, so in three and five, I'll throw it out for discussion. One possibility would say may have a courtyard, and that would remove the requirement, but allow it to be still within there, in which case, under three, we would have to consider how we dealt with the square footage requirement. So we'll see, we can start with that one.
We felt as if, if you wanted to encourage that particular design solution, that that would be fine, rather than mandating it. I mean, that's what our preference would be, that you would encourage it rather than mandate it.
Well, the reason, of course, that it's there is that we don't particularly want to encourage many assisted living residents developments spreading out without knowing something about them. And by tailoring the zoning to the model that the particular developer for Horse Place Stables, we have pretty good control over what happens at Horse Place Stables, but then if someone else wants to do an assisted living residence development somewhere else in town, and it doesn't seem like such a good idea, this gives us a hook to, to pull, to prevent that from happening. And the, the more you open it up to, let's have as many as we want, the, the bigger the problem, potentially. So I, I guess when we, when I wrote this, I was doing it to enable a one development at the Horse Place Stables. And I wasn't looking to have many of them. I'd, I'd like to know where the other ones are proposed, and then look and see how they think that these, this thing is going to fit in with the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera. And then we could go to town meeting and get their blessing, which gives us the control that I think the town needs. But that was, that was, that, that's the reason for this. I mean, there's nothing that we really, I do like courtyards. And port cocheres are pretty nice, too.
Well, as I recall, we had a couple of different discussions on this among the, the members of the board. And one was, to Alex's point, this is a new use in town, and there was some concern that if we just open up the town to the use, the town meeting would be a little bit worried that, you know, we don't know where it's going to go, we don't know what's going to happen. So let's tailor the zoning as much as possible to narrow down the number of sites and the type, so we know that. We always figured that we would have to come back and modify it, but this does give us, as you said, the chance to control the first one or two that come in, see how we react to it, and also allow town meeting to consider this new use, but without worrying about it being going anywhere. On the more specific things, we did when we visited the site by this particular operator, I think we all liked the idea of a courtyard where the people who were living there could take outdoor, you know, they could be in an outdoor space that was very safe for them because the entrances and exits were controlled, especially for people who might be having memory issues. And it wasn't that they were going to be potentially wandering around off the site without somebody realizing it because there were limited numbers of ways to get in and out. On the port cochere, I think one of the reasons we liked that and included it, although there may be other ways of dealing with it, is it allowed for people to get in and out of the cars out of the rain. And this wasn't something that had a separate covered parking structure in it, nor was one proposed for that. So we could think of other ways of encouraging that, but the idea of having some sort of structure where the car could pull up and people who are really quite vulnerable could get in and out without being affected by rain or other inclement weather was an important one, and that's one of the reasons that was included. We did note that at the particular site that we saw, the port cochere was in fact not well-integrated with the porch itself, so that there were places where somebody who stepped back a couple of feet might actually get drenched. So one of the reasons we put in the language we did, as we discussed it, was actually to ensure that should such a structure be built that's in fact integrated with the building, so that you don't have that danger. And maybe, you know, we can check the wording and make sure that's what we intended to do, but we didn't want there to be, you know, building, porch roof, and then port cochere, but where somebody could easily have the very accident that we're hoping not them not to have.
But your stated goals, I think, would actually be better is the language, but, because your language is actually the, the design solution. So if you said that we encourage outdoor space that's secure and safe for memory impaired, you know, this memory impaired population, and that you encourage, you know, a drop-off environment which was free from the elements, and again, safe and level and so forth. It, it, it doesn't sound as if it's so specific that it's written for one site and one developer. And I know that you, you've said that that's your intent, and we had a long discussion about that. I, I'd like, let Joyce and Stan offer some other opinion. You've heard me speak to these before, so I'd like to let them speak as well.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I, I respect the notion that both Emily and the chairman have noted about control, because that could well describe your job in a word. And I understand that and respect that a great deal. If you deleted both of those sentences that we're talking about, you still have ninety-nine point nine percent of the control that you have with them in here. So, so the issue of control is not, is not what we're challenging here by any stretch of the imagination. The, I would just like to make one other comment, and that's to support Cheryl's point. Understand that you want a safe environment. That's the way to express it, because there are other design ways to give that. Understand you want protection from the elements. That makes great sense, no question about that. Say it that way. There are many ways, design ways, for designers to, to achieve those. And again, you've got the control because it'll be before you and those items will be met. And you won't be granting, having to grant exceptions because you have been overly specific here. That's my nickels worth.
Well, the, the problem with encouraging, encouraging covered parking, the developer either takes it...
Not covered parking, covered drop-off.
Covered, covered drop-off. But the developer either accepts it or not. And if the developer says, no, I don't think so, that's the end of that. Because encouragement is different from saying, there shall be a covered entrance way. And, and, but that's a port cochere. And that's all we meant by port cochere. I, I could have used the word covered, covered entrance way instead, but it seemed to me that that was a, sort of a nice, nice concept. And, and once again, there shall be secure areas, but I, I mean, that just makes us have to determine security issues during the special permit process, which is, you know, it's, we're not professionals. Well, I suppose we could become professionals, but I, I mean, we can say that, but it, it just, it, it does make our task somewhat, somewhat harder.
If we changed under 12C, if we changed port cochere, which is in the choice, to covered pickup/drop-off space, not parking.
We could do that.
We could do that. It's less elegant, perhaps, but it would...
It's less elegant, but it, it does show a...
What?
It shows that we're willing to compromise.
We are willing to compromise. I'm still working on the courtyard language. Give me a...
Well, we could just take it out. We could just take it out.
What we're saying here is the planning board, you want to keep as much control as possible. And I thought I heard some agreement on that. So why make it broader?
It's not making broader, just changing the language to allow slightly...
It's making it broader, but we, we want the warrant committee to feel happy when we get to town meeting because the planning board, even though it is a well-respected organization, sometimes...
Well, I think the warrant committee, in fact, kind of made the point that that is the job of the planning board, to keep a tight rein on development.
Yeah.
So why loosen the rein?
Well, I think that it's a friendly, it's a friendly thing to do, Mike.
Yeah, we're not listening. It's still a requirement.
You went to Great Lakes to explain it to me when this first started, how you were tailoring it for a specific site and brought me to the understanding that that was a good thing, which I agreed to.
This is not the end of the, I mean, there's still a lot of stuff in there that is...
Absolutely, absolutely. But I just, I guess I'm just making the point that if I have ten hurdles to jump versus nine, I'd rather make the guy jump ten hurdles.
I know, but nine is still a lot of hurdles.
Nine hurdles. So on three and five, I think I might have a solution. In both cases...
Take out the, there shall be?
You can, you can actually leave the shall be. You can have, there shall be, or may be, well, we'll leave that open, a courtyard or other similarly secure outdoor area. In both cases. So on three and then on five.
There shall be a courtyard or other similarly...
Similarly secure, secure outdoor area.
And you're going to keep the same area.
Keep the same type of the rest, yeah.
The similar, what do you think, warrant committee?
I had actually said something similar in our discussion, so I, I like the language.
Other similar, they, secure area.
Secure outdoor, outdoor.
Secure outdoor area.
I think that's what you intended here, indoor and outdoor.
Yeah, exactly. So, and then the...
Wait a minute.
Yep, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump in.
This area shall be designed to provide outside this area.
This area, oh, yes, good point. So that's on three, instead of the courtyard area, this area?
Yeah.
Great. And let's make sure we don't have... Oh, the building exclusive of this area in five.
Exli, in, in five, it would be exclusive of any courtyard?
I was, no, in five, we've got, let's see, the building...
The building exclusive of any courtyard.
I was going to say exclusive of this area.
Well, you don't have to, because the outside area won't be part of the building.
Oh, right, of course.
Exclusive of any courtyard.
Yes.
Got that, warrant committee?
And you have the, or other similarly...
We're going to just put any courtyard.
So it'll read, the building shall have a landscaped central courtyard or other similarly secure outdoor area, providing sitting areas and outside uses, the building exclusive of any courtyard and any accessory buildings, et cetera.
Okay.
So that just leaves the interior spaces, 12J.
Oh, we, what about, what about the port cochere? Oh, we're changing that.
Changing it.
You're suggesting a different change?
No, we're changing the...
No, Bill's suggesting a different change.
What?
So we have currently, as an option, there shall be a distinctive principal entrance to the building with a large porch suitable for sitting in C.
C?
Page four, C.
Okay.
So, there shall be a distinctive principal entrance to the building with a large porch suitable for sitting and a covered pickup slash drop-off space, designed as an integral part of the porch over the pickup and discharge area at the principal entrance. Yeah, good point. The porch and covered pickup and drop-off space shall be in the same architectural style as the rest of the building. Now, Bill is suggesting, there shall be a distinctive principal entrance to the building, period, a large porch suitable for sitting and a port cochere. You want to keep the port cochere?
No, it'd be...
We have to take that out?
Take it up?
It has to be the covered.
Okay.
Keep reading.
Port cochere, designed as an integral part of the porch over a pickup and discharge area, period. The porch and port cochere shall be in the same architectural style as the rest of the building.
Okay. I think that we can do covered pickup/drop-off area in place.
They don't have to be in the same place. They don't have to be at the front door.
No, but we want at the front door, we want to... Well, they could have more than one, but I think at the front...
But you don't need it to be your principal.
But I think it should be, is what I'm saying, is you want the principal area to be...
No, you want where they say...
Enter here.
Enter here to be dry.
Yeah.
I'm saying the seating area.
No, the sitting area should be that porch. Yep, and then you have the, it can be exactly the same as they have it now. We're just calling it something that's a little bit more flexible. We're still requiring the same thing.
A covered pickup/drop-off area?
Pickup, yes. Slash drop-off area, space, area. Area works better. Yeah.
Designed as an integral part...
Of the porch.
No, no, of the...
Of the building.
Of the building.
Yes, absolutely. Building, period. Oh, building at the principal entrance. See, don't you love zoning on the fly?
I presume that you're going to send us some advice.
Yes. You'll need it anyway.
So I'm not going to get word per word here.
No, wait, 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 get first.
Do you want to read it out?
No, I want you to read it.
Okay. There shall be a distinctive principal entrance to the building with a large porch suitable for sitting and a covered pickup slash drop-off area, designed as an integral part of the building at the principal entrance. The porch and pick, covered pickup/drop-off area shall be in the same architectural style as the rest of the building. Does that sound reasonable?
I think it does. Okay.
Excellent.
Anything else?
J. J? So, one thing that I'd like to note on interior spaces is we've, and I understand what you're saying about the building department. We got nailed as a planning board. It was a, on a project where the interior spaces had not been properly insulated, at least in the view of the residents. I won't mention the building, because I don't want to give any buildings a bad name, but it was a while back. And so I think that was probably part of the incentive here, is to say, well, we've got a standard that you have to meet on this and put that in the standards. But I am open to figuring out how else we can express this. But something that we can point to and say, in a building like this, which really does need some sort of protect, we want to make sure you're doing it. As part of our special permit, you have to do this. How do, how do we express that?
Isn't, isn't J kind of opinionated? Is it...
Well, yes, it is.
Yeah, that's part, yeah, and I agree, that's a problem.
But if, if there are three different standards for, this is the best, this is the medium, and this is what they usually do, we're going to want them to, the building commissioner to say, you've got to do the best. And the building code doesn't always say there's just one way to do something. It, it basically says what's acceptable, and...
But you need to give the person who's constructing that some guidance, not subject...
No, they need to tell us what they're going to do. I mean, this is, this is the point. They need to come in and say, we're going to do X, Y, Z standard building. And, and, you know, that's going to be, that's, that's going to be fine, but someone, we, we just want to know that they're, they're going to, they're really going to try hard to make this a quality building. And there are a lot of buildings that meet building code that just aren't as good as other buildings, because they, they just aren't.
Each person that comes in with a puzzle development is going to come before the planning board?
Yeah, because it's a special permit.
They need a special permit.
Well, I guess then J would be sufficient as is then, because then they're going to have to show us some kind of section of the walls.
Well, that's exactly right. I mean, this is on 131 Central Avenue. I knew that, I, we were... I knew that, we were, if this thing had gone along, we were going to have a problem with those interior walls.
Wait, 131 Elliott or 36 Central?
131 Elliott Street. We were going to have a, at 36 Central, they did a nice, nice job with the walls, but we were going to have a problem there. But we did want the developer to specify how they were going to achieve sound resistance.
Well, they keep M.J. in here as it is. We'll make that point each time and bring it to the forefront, and it'll be looked at.
My view is that it doesn't infringe on anyone's, anyone's rights. It just gets a better building in the end.
I'd like to know what the zoning subcommittee thought. How, how did you see this being reworked so as to include our goal of ensuring that the highest possible standards for the noise reduction and finishes were included, but without stepping on the toes of the building code or, you know, what were your thoughts on this?
Well, I think you'd agree that it's unusual to have interior standards requirements in the zoning.
We did it at Central Avenue. The Central Avenue thing has the same...
And one of the reasons is that you can say requirements like the building setbacks shall be 20 feet, or the building height shall be 45 feet, and a proponent can come in and demonstrate that the building is 20 feet back and 35 or 45 feet high, whatever. But there's two, there's so much subjectivity to what is considered a high-quality material, and it's highly dependent on the, the kind of use. So this kind of use has a different requirement in the building code than a typical multifamily dwelling would, would, in it, for an instance. So that it triggers certain different requirements in the building code. So if what, if what you're saying is somebody comes in and they say to you, "I'm going to design this building to meet the applicable building code for this use type," then you say, "Show me what that is, and we'll decide if that meets our zoning requirement." And so that's, that's the question, is how is this related to the building code, and then how is it enforced, or how is, how does an applicant know that they've met the requirement of this paragraph? And that, it seemed confusing to us that one would know how to meet this, and that would be seen too subjective, because how would you demonstrate? So it's, it's one thing to say, "You shall have a porch," or, "You shall have windows with muttons," but to say what a quality material for a use type, that's, that's got a lot of regulation. It's regulated not only at, in the building code, but it's regulated for, in its own subsection, whatever it is, of the law that you reference here yourself. And so there are fire codes that apply, certain materials, as Emily knows, you know, don't meet flame spread requirements. And so it's sort of, has this become a sort of a quandary? Now, that's, those are materials. That's different than the demising partition, which is really an acoustic issue. And again, if you wanted to dictate what that STC rating between the walls should, could be or should be, you could give what rating you want. You could say it needs to meet certain STC. There are design assemblies, you can look up what the assemblies are, and it'll tell you, there are standards which would say that this would meet certain decibel, but if somebody had a stereo on that played a certain kind of music, it might not work. So it is, again, it's sort of, I've worked with acoustic consultants who, I review these things with them on a regular basis. It's not just the walls, it's the floors. If you have a multi-story building, the floor is as important as the wall. And it's not just between the units, but what about between that and the common areas, the nurses' station or the office? So there's how, it's, so the, it's not, it's not specific enough, this, in this case, to be clear how you can meet it. And it's better suited really, you know, to, maybe you have them demonstrate that they meet the requirements of the building code for the use type, or the, or exceed, or you ask, or you do some more research and you find out what the right STC rating is between the units and between the floors.
What do you think the right STC unit?
I don't know offhand today, but I could do some research and...
Why don't you do that, and we'll, we'll put it in. We'll put it in, and we'll just take out the second sentence about interior finishes shall be constructed with high-quality materials.
Well, if you put the decibel rating in there, I mean, if you put the decibel rating in there, it wouldn't be any necessity really to take it out.
Are resistant to noise from the adjoining units so as to obtain a blah blah rating.
But just to throw a spanner in the works, if we put in a specific rating, it may be for that, this particular use, that rating may change over time as materials change and become more specific, or as research goes into, you know, they're constantly researching what is an appropriate environment for people who are...
But when they build this building, they're going to need some guidance.
I understand that they're going to need guidance. I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can put the guidance in without specifying certain things that may change.
There is, but it would take a lot of words.
You have to say, "Decibels on the exterior of this unit..."
Yeah, see, I don't think...
Undetectable in the unit, more or less.
Or, "So as to obtain a blah 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 rating has..."
What I'm wondering is if there's a way we can say that we would like them to meet the highest current standard...
You don't know what that is.
No, no, no. They have to prove that. They have to say, "Okay, these are the current standards."
The highest standard is, is basic soundproof.
That might be very difficult, Emily, to say the highest.
So how, what language can we use?
Cheryl will come up with the standard.
I will offer to do that, to come back with a recommendation. I'll talk to an acoustic consultant, and I'll get a recommendation.
But make it general enough, please, so that we don't have to change the zoning every time new recommendations may come out on these...
Well, the ratings usually, Emily, different manufacturers, they have to get those test, their assemblies tested to meet the rating. And you can achieve it a number of different ways. So you can look to these books that the, that the testing agencies put out, and it'll, they'll say that this is what was tested, and this is what rating it achieved. And there's any number of assemblies that can meet the same rating.
But I understand that, but what I'm saying is that the ratings themselves may change over time, and the recommendations for particular ratings for particular uses may change over time. And I don't want us to have to come back and change the zoning every time those change.
I will, I will, I will volunteer to do some sort of language.
Okay.
In parentheses, or...
And you're going to, Cheryl can work.
And we're going to take out...
Your statement here, too, just, it isn't just the walls. It's the, it's also...
No, it's, it's, it's the, it's the, it's the whole, it's the whole shooting, shooting, whatever. No, are we, are we taking out, are we taking out the second sentence?
Yes, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, that's...
Sure, thank you.
What?
Now, how are you going to do this?
What do you mean, how are we going to do this?
You can't change the, the article at this time.
No, the recommendation would have to change. So the Warren Committee would have to agree.
The suggested changes need to be addressed in an amendment to the article on the floor of town meeting.
No. The Warren Committee can print a recommendation, their recommendation, before town meeting to be distributed at town meeting itself. Alternatively, if you guys have gone to press, but the draft has, the proof has not been finished, you can actually change the recommendation in the proof.
No, it's the green sheet or pink sheet.
If, if the proof hasn't already been done, then, if the proof's already been done, then they can do the green sheet. But if they can catch it before it goes to final printing, you can change the recommendation in the final printing to include this language. But we would have to have that last paragraph, paragraph J revised probably tonight to make your proofing. So I'm guessing the green, I can see Gene nodding in the background. So I'm guessing the green sheets will be the best. So the floor, the recommendation on the floor of town meeting is the warrant committees. If they're willing as a committee to change it, then this gets printed and this becomes the motion at town meeting.
Right.
And you're willing to accept their recommendation.
Yeah, well, we'll accept it with these, the changes we're talking about.
So that's, was our question last night, is, does, since you wrote the article, do you make the amendment suggestion on the floor of town meeting?
No, you make it as part of your recommendations, and therefore we will be working from, we won't have to do amendments.
There won't be two of them, there'll be one.
Yes. This, this becomes the motion.
So you'll write that for us and...
This becomes the motion, and we'll say, "This is great."
Yeah, we'll support it. It comes to your motion, assuming the other members of the Warren Committee agree. Let's keep portion.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we have our meeting to take the vote on it next Wednesday.
Okay. Who has what was just written?
I do.
Alex's is probably easier.
So you're going to give the Warren Committee the language on the covering...
I've got to get, I've got...
So the only thing that they're going to come up with basically on their own is the new standards for the soundproofing.
But Alex is going to work with them.
Well, I'm not going to do the standards, I'm going to do the hedging language or...
Hedging, yes.
Hedging.
With that, with that opening is Cheryl will insert...
Right, right.
Hedging language after she puts in her standard.
But that will have to be done by Wednesday, so the Warren Committee can take it back.
I understand that.
Just making sure.
And we thank you for considering our changes.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the minutes.
Okay, thanks. You saw the, you saw the changes on that other, the landscaping greenhouse stuff.
Can you email those to us, Phil?
Sure.
I think we should probably take a vote on this, don't you? Because we won't meet again before you...
Yes, let's do that.
Okay, so I will move that we make the changes to three, which is common area space, five, the building and accessory buildings, 12C, which covers the pickup and dropoff area, and that we will accept the changes that you and Cheryl Taggias make to 12J, subject to the meeting our discussion tonight.
Okay, okay.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? All right. Okay, now...
I believe you had a question about the master plan.
Why don't you tell us about that?
Well, the contract with Brown Walker has been signed.
We are basically, we are in our final, it's eight twenty.
I'm impressed.
If we can get out of here before 10...
I'm giving, I am giving it to you in two seconds. I just...
You want to hear it?
Oh, thanks a lot.
That's a good time.
Thanks a lot, Ed. So the contract with Brown Walker has been signed, I'm going to remember that, Ed. And the first meeting in the master plan committee will be on the 16th of October.
Wow.
And that's what I have for you.
All right.
That's good, wasn't it?
Now, people...
Yes?
We have a communication for the members to make with Mr. Duffy, and regarding...
Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark, and, and the good job he's doing for us.
He's doing an excellent job.
I just, I just go through stupid...
Well, you know, Alex, if I recall...
But there it might, I don't think that we should discuss it on TV.
I don't think we have a choice, to tell you the truth, unless we go into executive session, for which we would have had to have been posted.
All right. Well, I guess that's right. But it's not on the, it's not on the agenda either.
It's not on the agenda either, so why don't we find out whether or not it has to go into, we have to go into executive session, and then we can post it, if so.
All right. But it is, we are very satisfied and think he's doing a great job.
He is doing a very good job.
For lots of people, like just us.
Yeah, that's a very good point, Eddie, is he's, he's working for more than just the board.
Exactly.
He's everywhere.
Exactly. Okay, now we'll, we'll take that, that motion that we all live for.
Move to adjourn.
A second.
You're going to ask for...